It being six o'clock on Tuesday, January 16th, 2024, I'm calling this Board of Selectmen meeting to order, and we'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded by PAC TV. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify us at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by contacting the selectman's office. For anyone interested in volunteering, we have a number of vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of those openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. Dog licenses are available in the clerk's office, so keep in mind there is a $20 late fee if your dog is not registered by March 15th. So you still have some time, but not a ton. On January 29th, our health agent will be holding a serve-safe food managers class in this room at the townhouse, Room 200, from 8:00 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. You need to call and pre-register, so you would call 781-585-0503 to register. And the cost of that class is $80, and just make sure that you pay that in advance. The website says cash or check, so usually we're just check.
Yeah, if they want to pay cash at the townhouse, they can certainly do that.
Okay.
And if I could just expand upon that.
Please.
The course that's being offered, the $80 is covering the cost of the document that you'll receive, the book document manual that you'll receive at the training session. The town is not looking to make any money on this. It's just simply providing the documentation you need to have that class done.
Right, so the price is really just the cost of the material itself. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. As a reminder, in our meeting in early November, the Board of Selectmen set the town meeting date for Saturday, May 4th, and the town election for Saturday, May 18th. So I just wanted to make sure everyone has that on their calendars. It's a little different schedule than the past, and that's part of the bylaw change that was made in the special town meeting. The highway department is still seeking plow drivers for the upcoming winter season, which apparently is here as we experienced today. We have increased our rates this year and are also offering a $750 insurance stipend for qualified contractors. For more information, please call 781-585-0513. And just a thank you, I did see the plow drivers out there today, as many as we have. We tried to get them out there. I thank everyone for moving their cars off the streets. That's really important to keeping the streets clear, and moving the basketball hoops off on some of these side streets and cul-de-sacs. It's really important you move them, and I appreciate that I didn't see any when I was driving here today, so appreciate that. Are there any other announcements? So Selectman Don Alkembray is joining us remotely, so I'll begin with a roll call vote before we get to the open forum and the appointments. So Kim Enberg, aye.
Sheila Vaughn, aye.
Tyler Bouchard, aye.
Eric Cron, aye.
Don Alkembray, aye.
Okay. Is there anyone here for open forum?
Yes, Maureen Nowood.
Okay, and your address?
Devon Havas Drive, Kingston.
Okay.
Am I ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay. To the Board of Selectmen, to Kim and the board, I'm on the Council on Aging Advisory Board, and I would love to see you come over, all of yous. It doesn't matter when you come over. You know, just come over. You don't have to tell us you're coming over. Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays to see the cafe and just to see how things go and see how the people are there and they're socializing. They're having a good time. They're either having breakfast, lunch, or a hot meal. Thursdays especially is when you see the people that come in for a hot meal that have to make a reservation. And they say the Pledge of Allegiance, they sing "God Bless America", and then they eat their dinner and they have a good time. So I wish you would come over. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for open forum?
Pine Dubois with the Jones River Watershed Association and Jones River Landing. And I just wanted to...
Oh, is the microphone on?
Good. So Pine Dubois with Jones River Watershed Association and Jones River Landing. I just want to point you all to the excellent drone footage that Jimmy Powell was able to take for the flood on Saturday. And besides being a good indication of what the town is facing in those early stages of sea level rise, we would love to see more active policing when that happens because, take a look at the cars racing through and the amount of waves that are coming from Landing Road across into the Landing. Half the seawall already fell down in November of '22. This doesn't help us. And it makes it very difficult, and it's also extremely dangerous. We had many trucks. I couldn't take pictures of all of them, Kim, because I was too busy. But many trucks and several of them, I mean, there was one longer than your table that, you know, with rigs on top of it that started for the bridge and then had to back up with a huge line of traffic sitting in the flood. So it would really help if there was some sort of, you know, prep, I would say, from the police or, you know, roadblocks, because we know when those tides would... NOAA tells us they're often wrong about how high it was going to get. Like Saturday was higher than it was predicted, but it would really help a lot in terms of safety and just dealing with the infrastructure. I don't think people know that salt rots their cars. It would be good if they knew that. I'm ready to send those pictures to the insurance companies who insure those vehicles because honestly, it's not fair for any of us. Jones River Ecology YouTube channel.
Thank you. For the public, Jimmy said he can send it to us directly as well.
So while... Yeah, that's fine. I apologize.
They just can't. They can't hear you if you...
Just if anybody who's watching, just if they see some sort of a hazard in the roadway or the other roadway, if they would just call the police department, talk to dispatch, explain to them what's happening, and I'm sure the police department will respond in whatever way they can. I'm not sure if that happens over the weekend.
They said it was way after.
I just thought they may... I just want to make sure that, you know, that the police department's aware of what's happening. I understand. I don't think anybody is keenly aware of the title highs and all that is others. So if you could just give them an idea of what's happening, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Anyone else here for open forum? Okay, then we'll move right along. So our first appointment is the continuation of public hearing for earth removal, an earth removal permit for PK Realty Trust for off Route 44. So on December 19th, this board opened a public hearing regarding that request for an earth removal permit, and the hearing was continued to this evening. So just to update everyone, the applicant provided the necessary funding for the peer review on January 9th, and a firm will be chosen soon to complete that review. However, while we await the results of that peer review, the town administrator has recommended that we consider continuing to a future meeting and suggested perhaps February 13th at 6:15 p.m. That will give them enough time to conduct that review, I'm assuming, and provide us with a report on that. Yes, Keith?
Yes.
Okay, great. So do we need to reopen the public hearing?
I think you do.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, you just say it all?
Just say, move to open.
Move to open the public hearing.
Reopen the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Kim, aye.
Sheila, aye.
Tyler, aye.
Eric, aye.
Don, aye.
Okay, now unless there are any objections, we have a recommendation for continuing to February 13th, and that date worked for the applicant as well.
It has. And again, if I could, just, there's no guarantee the peer review will be completed at that point, but we hope to have somebody hired this week, and depending on workload and whatnot, we hope to have it back for that meeting.
Great. I move the Board of Selectmen continue the public hearing until February 13th, 2024 at 6:15 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor? Kim, aye.
Sheila, aye.
Tyler, aye.
Eric, aye.
Don, aye.
All right.
I move to close the public hearing.
Nope, nope, we just continued.
I'm sorry. Not closing.
We're good. You're all set.
Sorry.
Yep.
May I remark? I'm sorry, before you close the hearing, help?
We continued the hearing.
Well, you're opening a kind of Pandora's box.
Right, so what we were...
It's purely administrative and dangerous, not argumentative. It's up to you, though. It's your choice.
So what we were doing this evening was merely continuing at the request of both the town administrator but also what I assumed was the applicant.
I'm applicant's counsel. I'm tagging in for Tim Angley. He had back surgery, so...
Oh, jeez.
So if you could go up there, just so I can, we can... No, no, understood. So we continued it to the 13th. I guess my question for you is, does that date, as far as you know, does that date work?
Yes, thank you very much for the record. Is this thing on? Can you hear me okay?
If the light's green, it should be on.
All right, for the record, Rob Dambroso, Dambroso Lawn Plymouth, pinch hitting for Tim Angley tonight. He had back surgery. That date does work, and thank you for continuing. That's great. I think that's necessary to give time for the peer consultant. My question was purely about the selection of the peer review consultant. I know Mr. Hickey had said you hoped to have him engaged this week. My understanding, which it may be the case, but I wanted to confirm, is that the applicant will have an opportunity to review the proposed peer review consultant. Is that correct?
I don't know how that process works, so...
No, the Board of Selectmen made a motion at their meeting last month to give the town administrator the authority to choose a peer review company out of the list of peer review companies that the town of Kingston has. I told Attorney Angley at the time that I was frankly very busy with budgets and things of that nature, and once the town received the $10,000 escrow amount, I would review and determine which of the appropriate firms are available, can expedite the process, and are best suited to do this work. We received, as the chairman mentioned, we received a check late last week. I will review the list of firms. Your counsel has suggested three firms. We'll take that, as I told him, we'll take that into consideration. But the motion from the board that evening, there is no blessing that is going to be given to the applicant's review of a firm that's going to provide a peer review.
Very good. Okay, so you've got our recommendation, and you'll make the selection, it sounds like.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, all right. Item number two, we have an appeal of Council on Aging Board's decision. So on November 16th, an incident occurred at the senior center involving a patron to the senior center and the director of elder affairs, which resulted in the director issuing the patron with a 30-day suspension from entering and attending activities at the senior center, which is per the authority under her role as well as under the code of conduct. The appeal was heard on December 15th by the advisory board, where the chairman of their board explained they could uphold, overturn, or modify the suspension per their code of conduct and the appeal procedure. So ultimately, the board voted six to one to modify that 30-day suspension and instead institute a permanent ban. So the patron then appealed their decision, which is her right under their code of conduct that they have. So that's why we're here this evening to consider that appeal, deliberate, and uphold, modify, or modify the, I guess, or overturn the decision by the COA advisory board.
Can you leave me to open my meeting?
If you're going to deliberate and you're going to give your opinion, then yes. One, two, three, four. Yes, they have a majority.
We're here to be here for questions.
So it'd probably be good. Yeah, go ahead.
Trying to stay away from everybody because I feel really bad told. I'm Katie Starr, chairman of the Council on Aging Advisory Board. It is officially, what time is it? Six, we call it 6:15. I'm just going to order, open our meeting.
Sorry, because you have people remotely, if you could do a roll call vote for your members. So you just say, well, you just say Katie Starr, aye, and then they can go through and say their name and just say aye.
Okay.
Sorry.
When we vote?
Just right now. Roll call vote to open the meeting.
Roll call vote to open it. Katie Starr, aye.
So Donna Weinberg, aye, she said?
Kathy Studley.
Kathy Studley, aye, okay.
Mary Harriman. And on Zoom?
Maureen Nowood, aye.
Joan Hutchison, aye.
Great, perfect. Thank you. Okay, all right. So where do we want to start? Everyone's had a chance to review the materials. They were extensive. We have minutes. We have transcription. We had the meeting recording from the appeal. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have a question, but if you want, I can just start off with a statement, if you want. So seeing that we're part of the appeals process, from my perspective, the way I would look at this is if this other committee or board had made a decision, for me, I have to look at, and again, this is my understanding of what our responsibility is, were they acting within the scope of what their process was supposed to be? Did they go outside of that, which I don't think so. You know, I did watch the video of your meeting where you all upheld and actually extended the ban. So from my perspective, I don't feel like I know enough to... I don't have any information based on the testimony from everybody in that meeting to overturn this particular suspension. And again, looking at what they did and what their process was, it looks like they were within their realm of what their duties were. They could have done one, two, or three in terms of suspensions, and they went to three. And it does say that they can go directly to three. They don't have to go through each one of the various suspensions.
So just to be clear for folks who aren't looking at the materials, one, two, and three, you mean first offense, verbal warning, second offense, written warning, third offense, long-term or permanent exclusion. And just for the purposes of the record, they don't have to go in that order?
Correct.
Should something be deemed... I don't know. It just, they are allowed to skip steps, I guess.
Right.
It's what it says in the policy, whether or not... I don't know. I struggle with this.
Yeah, I mean, I think that this is an appeal. I mean, we have the right to appeal. This is the way the structure works, so we don't just blindly say yes or no, depending on what that... That's why the structure is in place. I'll be 100% honest. I think a lifetime ban is out of line. I don't agree with it. I think, you know, you could have gone a route of another 30 days or upheld the 30 days that was there, but I think a lifetime suspension from the Council on Aging, I think, is extremely aggressive. And that's, I think it's, I think you have two testimonies. I've watched the video multiple times. I've read through the material. I have sympathy for both sides. I see both sides, but I think a lifetime ban is excessive. And I think if I was sitting here, which I do have the right to vote on this tonight as an advisory board, I just, we have to look at this from a standpoint, is a lifetime ban really necessary at this point for that person? Is that overstepping a few other steps down that road? And has it been done? We don't have the answers to that. Has ever been done to anybody? And I was thinking of examples of, just an example, it's a different scenario, but I was thinking of examples of umpire. I used to umpire a lot of baseball games. I've kicked out a lot of dads, okay? A lot of dads, a couple moms, too. And there were times when that board, when the youth organization board would suspend somebody for a season. They would suspend somebody, and a lot worse language than that, okay? And I'm not saying that that is morally correct at all, language used in that scenario, but I have seen people in those scenarios do a lot worse than that, and they got bans for maybe a game. Maybe they got banned for the playoffs. Maybe they got a warning. Maybe they got banned for the season, but there was never, ever, that I ever see in my years and years and years of umpiring. And these are children. These are not adults governed by adults. These are children with coaches. I've never seen a lifetime ban. Maybe it's happened since my time, but I think I umpired for about eight or nine years, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of games, and I saw people take the... I never saw a lifetime ban. And so I don't agree with it, and respectfully, I think that we should overturn it.
I do want to address that question, but I want to see, just as we start, if Don or Sheila also have questions, because maybe we can ask them at once about whether we've done a ban before. I think that's a helpful question to ask. Sheila?
You know, as we've changed some of these laws of the Council on Aging and... As we've gone through this, it's very difficult for me as a person who doesn't go there all the time, who's not there, who, you know, I don't know how the ripple effect goes. You know, I'm kind of in the in-between of like, I think of, I don't like to step on anybody's toes because I believe that there are committees and there are, there's a chain of command and there's a chain of way to go about things. And, you know, is this person going to make things worse in this center forever to have a ban like that? Is it something that if this person came back, it would make for a really bad environment for everybody? Is it something that literally, it is so bad that this person could, is just going to make life for this entire council and this entire room that bad that this person is going to come back here and it's going to make everybody that goes there just miserable? And that, to me, is why you should terminate somebody to go in there. Is it that bad that that person walks in that building, it's going to make everybody just turn around and want to go home? You know, that, to me, is something that I have to give and take with. Because as a person who works for the state, you know, I have to go through a process when I go and terminate somebody. I can't just go to somebody and say, I don't like you. You called me a name, and just say, you can't come back here again. I have to have proof. I have to have written notices. I have to be able to give them a chance to do better. And for me, it's like, if you don't give them a chance to do better and be better, how can they, how do we do that? Because if it's been a chain, if it's been a chain and you've seen this person do this constantly, and you said, finally, that's it, it's something. If it's once and you say, you can't do that again, and then you give them, and then you just think about it and go, nope, we're going to do it forever. I think you got to give them a little bit of time to see if they can change. And if they don't change, you definitely need to do more. And so that, to me, is where I see a little bit of like, do we give them enough time to see if they would change? And if they're not going to change, then yeah, you got to do more. But I think my issue is kind of the timeline of when do we say to her, or say to this person, hey, you know, you got to do better, and if you come back here, it's over. But that's where I'm kind of in the in-between myself. So does that make sense?
No, no, I understand.
It's like, I want to be able to say to somebody, how do you fix the problem if you don't give them a chance to fix the problem?
It sounds like what you're saying is that you would have liked to have seen some sort of a warning ahead of a...
Yeah, I would like to see, you know, if that person gets out for 30 days and says, you know what? I know I made a mistake. Now, mind you, I get it. Not all of us change ever. Like, we don't always change. But that person comes back and immediately comes to on the attack, absolutely out. You know, I've given you a chance to come back. And again, I'm not there. This is where, I personally just think, I've just dealt with so many different unions and things in my lifetime that it's like, I have been, you know, on the attack a few times in my life. And so it is tough when I go back and say, how do I get somebody to fix themselves if I never gave them the chance to fix themselves? You know, because I've had people who are upset, and they had to go and do some training or they had to go get some, you know, you know, go to a class and say, hey, you know, not good. And then they come back and say, you know what? I'm not going to be like that, and I'm going to be better. It is a tough situation. You know, those words are very powerful. It is against somebody who is, you know, in charge. So it's very difficult for me, and I just feel like it's a hard situation.
So there's some questions about warnings and things, so we'll get that, too. Don, thoughts?
I struggle with the lifetime ban. I guess, you know, from a high level, and I don't know if someone can speak to this at this meeting for the public, too, but what was the reasoning for bumping it from 30 to lifetime?
That was a long discussion in their meeting, actually.
Yeah.
It was a long discussion. So I don't know if I can summarize that into three sentences, but... You want to? A try?
And can I ask another question, or you were made to wait till?
Let him do this one and then...
You got it.
So I think there's three key takeaways. Can you guys hear me? I really don't want to take this mask off. There's three key takeaways after our meeting. Prior to the lunch, Ms. Mola did ask if she could come in, and she was asked not to because it was going to be chaotic that day. So, and then she came in anyway, or early. She was always signing up for the lunch. She came in early, what, early and started to set up. That's when Mary Beth, you know, had that discussion with her. Mary Beth did actually offer her a compromise and said, you could stay here and play for a short period of time, 30 to 60 minutes, until it gets even more chaotic than it already is. So there was a compromise offered in that moment. And it was at that time that Ms. Mola made her claim, stated what she said to her friends, saying, we're not going to be able to play. So it wasn't even accurate because there was a compromise made. I think a second key takeaway during our hearing, during our appeal process, Keith did indicate that had he known that she would act the way she had when she came back in for the lunch. So there's a secondary event that took place, okay? So had he known that that was going to happen, he would not have had the thoughts, I believe. I'm not trying to mischaracterize, but you had stated during our meeting that had he known that that was going to be something that was going to take place, he would not have allowed her back in, out of the goodness of his heart. And then I think the last real key takeaway here is that six members of our board, there's seven of us, the six members of our board voted affirmative to extend the ban. These are six members, unlike me and unlike any of you, these are six people that spend a considerable amount of time in the center. They see this person and some others off and on. And it was during our meeting that deliberation, so to speak, that conversation was taking place, saying, you know, I see kind of trouble brewing. They see trouble brewing. So I think it makes sense that the six people that are actually there all the time were the ones that voted affirmatively. So those were just my three key takeaways that I wanted to point out.
So Katie? Oh, you go ahead. No, just a follow-up question on, you were the one of the ones that voted not to have a lifetime ban. Can you explain why?
In the moment, in the moment, I didn't see it potentially as necessary. I thought, I think I erred on the side that some of you are too, saying, you know, we're going straight to the top. But that's why I wanted to kind of point out that the people that are there all the time, they're the ones that see it all the time. They're the ones that are in it all the time. I'm not. I'm there for meetings. That's it.
And that's a valid point. I think that in the structure of government we have and the things we do, that's why we don't keep them in. We have to write these things down. We have to put pen to paper, emails. We have to record issues. And we have to have them publicly given. In my opinion, that's the structure in which it should happen. And do we... And do we have that? I know there's people that said they did not like, you know, her attitude or times other than, more than just that one day. And I totally understand that, I don't disagree with the 30-day ban at all, I agree with it. But, you know, is there a written track record that can be followed? Because at the end of the day, we need something that is more concrete than, to make sure that there's not some, you know, tribal warfare or anything. I'm not calling that a, but there's two testimonies that were on the table, with witnesses from both sides disputing that testimony. There was no clear, there was no clear outcome to those testimonies. So, how am I supposed to sit here and say that I have two testimonies? And then there's no other information other than verbal opinions, which I value your opinion, but at the end of the day, when it comes to a lifetime ban, a 60-day ban or another 30 days, I don't think we'd be sitting here. But a lifetime ban, you can, you need to have, you need to have your ducks in a row for a lifetime ban, in my opinion. And I don't see that in our information packet, I didn't see that in the meeting, and I did not see that into the two opposing arguments.
Like, I know we have employee files in HR, but would you have client files on the people who go in there?
They do, so if you had complaints and things, there'd be a record of that.
And, and just to clarify, though, you saying that the two testimonies were different, but they actually agreed. Like, she admitted to doing the things that she was accused of. Do you know what I mean? So, I mean, she did admit it, and that, I think that's, to me, that was big. But also, my question is, everyone here is saying a lifetime ban. I don't remember it saying lifetime ban in there. I know it said permanent ban, which I guess you can say is the same, same kind of thing. But let's say, you know, a year down the road, is there a process for somebody who had been banned, had a permanent ban to request to come back in? Or is it, once and you're out, and it can never be undone?
Not in this policy.
So, there's nothing, excuse me, there's nothing in the regulations or the policy that would allow a person to be reconsidered if they wanted to be. So, there's, there's not a formal process for that. Should that be something that could be considered to amend? Sure, I think that makes a lot of sense. But at this point, as we sit here tonight, there's nothing in writing with regards to...
To address the testimony part of it, you said they agreed on everything. They didn't actually agree on everything, because a lot of it, I felt like during the deliberation on how they were going to go, a lot of it came down to the high fives and the congratulations when she came, when Ms. Mola came back in. I felt like that was a linchpin moment, where she was coming back in and it looked like, it may have been, you know, I wasn't there, a moment of congratulation and kind of taunting, right? I felt like that was the moment in which there was actually dispute between Ms. Mola and the director and, and the board as far as what they saw. So, actually, I believe there was a dispute in the evidence about what they were saying, because I actually think that that seemed like, at the time, a big part of the taking a step forward for the lifetime ban was that moment of taunting. And that was the moment, actually, in the, in the, in the testimony, that I actually felt like was a big dispute. Was one saying, one person saying that was not necessarily the view I had on it, and the other person saying that was the view I had on it.
So, I was there shortly after. I did not see the incident, I'm not a first-person witness. But there was discussion at almost every table I stopped by to say hi to about the return to the COA and the cheering.
I'm sure there would, I'm sure there would be.
I'm just saying, like, I was there that day, right after all of that happened, and could see kind of the ripple effect of whatever happened. I wasn't there.
Sure.
I can't speak to that.
No, I'm saying, but on the side of evidence, I would just, I'm just pushing back a little bit to say that everybody agreed on everything. Because they didn't necessarily agree on everything.
So, they agreed about the, so they agreed about the swearing, right? We agreed about the name-calling, right? We agreed we knew it was against the code of conduct. That they discussed that in the meeting, they knew that the...
If I may?
Yes, please.
My recollection during the, our appeal process is that there actually was not a dispute about the celebration. I don't remember her actually indicating she did not celebrate. So, I just want to clarify. You're saying that she didn't celebrate, or she said she didn't, and I don't believe that that actually happened.
Tyler, my impression was more that it was a, "I can't control what my friends are going to do."
Yeah, that, sorry, I felt like that's where a lot of the vitriol came from, was that moment in time, and we weren't there.
Right, so, okay, so I guess my question, in looking at this code of conduct and thinking about appeals, I realize we're not in a court of law, but when we've dealt with appeals in the past, they typically look at, is it within the jurisdiction, does it follow the rules, if you will? So, whether or not I agree with whether this incident or the one, the secondary activity, whether I agree that should be a permanent ban or not, my first question is, is, were they within the scope of their authority to issue it? And did this person violate the code of conduct? I think both of those questions are yes. Yes, code of conduct was violated, and yes, the COA Advisory Board acted within their scope of authority to do so. Then the question just becomes...
It's moral at this point, it's a moral discussion about whether or not you think it's bigger.
Does this board? I mean, we've had this discussion before. So, we have an advisory board, right? Do we want to overturn their advice? I don't know, I mean, I don't have the answer to that. We didn't get all the answers to our questions, we had a couple of other questions. One was, have we banned anyone before? And I'd like to know if we have, what it was for.
Yeah, and...
Because I think that would help.
I think that'll help, but I think at the end of the day, I think what we're going to be left with is a moral decision between whether or not a lifetime ban is appropriate or not. I mean, at the end of the day, we can, we can, we can discuss all, we can discuss the evidence, we can discuss... We've seen it, but at the end of the day, this is, it's really come down to a moral position of, do we think that that is, it is, at this time, the right decision to ban somebody for life?
I think when you look at the, at the offenses and you look at, when you look through the disciplinary action and you look through the different things, you know, I mean, obviously, like, bringing certain things to the camp, like, my thing is, like, the bullying, the gossip, those things, they're in both. So, they're in the first, and they're in the second. So, it's kind of like, what is it?
What do you mean, the first and the second?
So, you know, when you talk about, like, immediately taking somebody out and saying, "You're done." When you do the conduct of the standards, you kind of have that first inappropriate behavior, but then you also have, like, the prohibited behavior. So, you have, but bullying is kind of in both, so you kind of...
What are you looking at?
I'm looking at, like, they're, they're...
Oh, okay, I see, I see, I see.
So, like, you need to leave immediately, or like, you know, you are inappropriate, you need to make changes.
Inappropriate behavior is defined.
And then there's like prohibited, you need to be out. And I think, I get what you're saying, but she had that, the second level. But I think it's really difficult, and I think Tyler makes a good point, that it's like, it is very difficult for us, because, you know, in some aspects, it's like, it's, you know, it's kind of like, who's, who's right, who's wrong? Everybody is kind of like, in this weird dynamic of like, and it's not that you're right or you're wrong or whatever. I think it's a matter of, like, overturning a board's decision is tough for me, it really is tough for me. I don't like to overturn a board's decision. I really honestly think that you go through all these, all these decisions. I think, for me, it's just, there's a lot of conversation, when you look at your rules and regulations, of documentation, 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 documentation. Put it in the folder, put it in the folder, put it in the folder. And I just don't know if there's any documentation that ever happened to this person, or they just, or they just, like, went off, off, off the handle, and now all of a sudden, it's like, "You're done." So, that's where I'm at, because I feel like if there was some documentation that you can show that this has been a problem, that's a little bit different for me, too.
Can I ask that question?
I can't answer that question, but is that, can Mary Beth address you guys?
If you can answer those questions, sure.
Katie did have something she wanted to add.
Oh, okay.
Well, it was just reiterating the fact that the six members that voted affirmatively that day saw things, but consistently over time see things as well, you know, systemically see things.
But unfortunately, with this stuff, if it's not documented, that's really hard to show.
Sure.
Right? I'm not doubting that they see things that we don't see, I, no question about that. I'm not at the senior center every day, I'm certainly not.
No, and I don't think anybody's disputing it was, it was a terrible situation, but there's a process in place. And we have to make a determination whether or not that process, do we think it was up to the standards of where that process is?
Can you, yeah, Mary Beth, could you answer whether or not, if you know, if we've banned someone before? And if so, generally, what it was for?
So, yes, there has been a gentleman by the name of Dawn, I can't recall his last name right now. But he has been banned on and off from the senior center for 30 days, 30 days, 30 days. And I think eventually, what came about was he was banned, permanently banned, but he never came in front of you appealing that permanent ban. Those are, the sketchy records that I have left over are what I was able to pull together, tell me that that's what's, what's ended up happening with, with Dawn. As far as the records...
Sorry, do you know what the cause was? No?
Troublemaker.
Okay, so, just general inappropriate behavior?
I mean, when you stop to think about misbehavior, bullying, foul language, attitude, inappropriateness, all of those things apply to Dawn, I have no doubt, but they also apply to this particular circumstance as well.
Okay.
Can I say something?
There's a point of order, sorry.
Sorry.
Can I say something? I've been on the board a long time, and I'd like to add to that.
Hold on, we have, we have a point of order, which actually, did you want to?
Okay.
No, sorry, Elaine raised her hand. What's your point of order?
My point of order is, the person you're talking about isn't here this evening.
Okay.
If the, there was two parties involved. One of the parties isn't here tonight, the other party has now been given the microphone to speak against...
She was here, wasn't she? She left.
I'm just, she's not present for the discussion right now.
I appreciate that, Elaine, for bringing that up.
And she's being given the opportunity to speak about the individual in not a good light, without that individual being here as well. At this particular hearing, at this time.
So, she was asked to answer some questions, so I'll try to keep her to those questions.
That, I would strongly suggest that.
This is on our agenda, so I, I'm sorry that she isn't here, but we're entertaining the appeal this evening.
I said, I said good evening to her, Elaine, she left. I don't know why she left, I didn't know, I thought she might be out in the hallway. Why she left, I don't know, I think it's fair to ask somebody questions, and if she was here, we could ask her a question, too.
Well, I disagree with that. You're talking about a individual who came out in bad weather, it's icing up out there, you don't know why she left. All I'm saying is, there's two people involved in this, one is being given the opportunity to speak poorly against her.
Okay, so Elaine, would you...
What you do with that is up to the board.
As a point of order, would you, are you asking that we consider continuing this to a time when she can be here?
No, you have the facts in front of you. Anything more than what's being given to you in those documentations should, and should not be entertained without that individual here being given the opportunity to counter them.
Okay, and I, just to be clear, what she said was that behavior was inappropriate, which we've already determined, and was spoken about in the appeals hearing, which the person was present for. So, so far, nothing has been said that is new information. But I appreciate where you're coming from, and I will not allow for people to be talking poorly without the ability to weigh...
I think the facts that you have been given should be stuck to.
I think you made your point, Elaine. Thank you.
Anytime. Yes, please, go ahead. The question was...
Which, which, I guess I'm going to get, if I could just expand for a second. This conversation is, is, is being held by the Board of Selectmen this evening, and I would ask everybody in this room to give each other the same level of respect you expect to be given, everybody.
And the second question, so yes, someone has been banned for inappropriate behavior.
Yes, and to address, and to address the question that has to do with documentation. So, this is, you have to understand something, when you have, typically, we only have one problem day in that building, and that's Thursday. And in my opinion, it's because of the fact that we have people that are coming in in the morning to play cards.
Can we go back to the documentation, though? And we already know a lot about the Thursdays.
I'm getting to that, I'm going to explain this, I'm actually explaining why there is nothing there. We don't have the ability to be able to set a hall monitor, if you will, or put someone in that dining room on Thursday that's walking around with a clipboard, writing down everything that everybody's saying. I, I need to be, I am of those scruples, that I will not take innuendo or gossip and use it as a point with which I'm going to use it as a cudgel to go after someone. The reason why this is my first shot at doing this is because it was something that was done directly. I really don't care that she called me a name. I cared about the fact that she had come in and done something that she was told not to do, and that she deliberately turned around after I told her that she could play cards, and said to the group that was there, "The bitch isn't going to let us play cards." So, it wasn't a question...
So, I'm just going to, yeah, I'm just going to...
I'm getting, I'm getting to that point, Mr. Vicki, I am.
Then arrive quickly.
Straight line.
I'm getting, I'm getting to that point, I'm getting to that point.
Respectfully, I think the Board of Selectmen here this evening, to either uphold the Council on Aging Advisory Board's decision or modify it.
And we aren't...
And you need to have all of the information.
They have all the information.
And I'm giving you, I'm giving you that information.
The only person that's gone off script off of what we had so far has been you, Mary Beth.
I'm sorry, what?
The only person that's gone off script off of what the information we've been given has been you.
I have all the information that you need, but apparently, I'm not being allowed to talk.
Then why is it in our hands? Because you're the only one that's been given off script.
All right, guys, all right, that's enough. So, I understand that you don't want to document gossip, totally understand that, and I appreciate that.
I'm not going to put a spy into the dining room, I'm not going to have somebody walking around writing down what everybody's doing. But let me be clear, that that circumstance, when she went back and did the high five, she was the one that was called out on it, okay? She was the one that was permanently banned as a result of being allowed back into the building. But she didn't do that alone. There were a whole lot of people that she was doing that with.
But this appeal is only for this one incident, so let me ask...
I understand, but what I'm trying to get at is that it's very difficult to be in the room when these things are going on, because we're running a department, we're running a senior center.
So, my, my question is related to the three levels on the disciplinary procedures for misconduct. So, the verbal warning. I guess my question is, was the request to move or not set up, was that a verbal warning? I don't, I don't know, was that discussed?
I'm sorry, say that again?
So, your request that she not set up the cards, or, I'm trying to figure out whether there was a verbal warning to the suspension.
No, there was never, no, no, she, she had called the week before and asked to play cards, and she was told she could not.
Okay.
And then she came in, yes.
I just wanted to check, okay, all right. The only, yeah, that was my only, oh, has, has she received, had she received, to the best of your knowledge, any verbal or written warnings before this day?
No.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
That's it for me. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, well, what do we want to do, folks?
Well, I'm happy to just, to say that I, how I feel right now is the fact that if it was a group of people that were doing this, then the group should be suspended. Because if it was a big group of people that were coming in and playing cards...
But that's not before us to say...
Yeah, it's not.
I'm just saying, for me, if everybody didn't do it, then I...
That's outside of the scope of our, both our agenda item and our scope of authority.
I, I'm at, I'm at the point that I'm going to say that I believe that this is harsh, and I think that it should be... But I, I mean, I don't know how it's going to come back to us, because we don't know, it should be a second offense, or it'd be a first offense? How do we go back on that?
Can I make a suggestion to the board?
Yes, please do, please.
I would respectfully suggest the board, somebody on the board make a motion.
What about the attorney?
And that motion can be debated.
No, it's not attorney.
And voted, voted on. One way or another. Letting know what you're debating, right? Right now, you, you don't know where you're at.
I can make a motion. I don't know these, I'm going to make a motion. I move the Board of Selectmen amend the permanent suspension, have Diane Mola to the original 30 days.
That's just going to encourage open season.
Hold on, is there a second on that motion?
Oh, sorry.
I'll second it just for discussion.
Okay.
Now, I'll say it, that's just going to encourage open season. I mean, imagine you're the umpire, you're umpiring a game, you kick a dad out of the game, he comes back, he's banned for 30 days, goes to your, to the KYBSL, and they say, "No, you can go back." The next time, he's going to be doing it harder, or somebody else, you know what I mean? It opens up, like, I, there's no way I could, I could support a shorter term, but it would have to be at least a year. I wouldn't do anything less than a year, for me. But honestly, I mean, I, I think there's a code of conduct, it was really not followed. Whatever kind of tensions are going on over there, you can't taunt. And that's what, that's, to me, watching the, their appeals hearing, that's what they were talking about, was when she went back and there was a lot of celebrating going on about being back in, and they got her. And I feel like we need to support our townspeople, our residents, our taxpayers, but also our employees and our staff.
But I also, I also feel like during that meeting, that was a, that's just such an aggressive leap, from 30 days to lifetime. I think that she seemed like she was sidetracked by that. I would have been sidetracked by that. I was sidetracked by it, watching it, thinking, "Oh, my gosh, you can, I mean, you can even do this." So, I, I mean, I mean, if we want to come up with our own extended, extended ban, that's one thing. But, I mean, she served the 30 days, it's almost been 30 days since then, or close to it.
Is she a Kingston resident? Is she a Kingston resident?
No.
Okay.
No. No.
I don't think that's also, I mean, there's a lot of people that are, there's a lot of people-
No, no, I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's not a-
This one, Cabo.
I think it should be a second.
No, it's not.
We have a motion.
We have a motion on the table, sorry.
Um, would you take a friendly moment for a second offense and itself?
Hold on, let's vote, let's, let's vote on this and see how it lands.
I'll listen to your second, I'll listen to your friendly.
I mean, I would, I would say friendly moment to be a second offense. To say that it's a, it's a second offense.
What does that mean?
Well, because the suspension was kind of the first offense, I believe, right?
Like it's already been served?
It's already been served.
Well, you can skip any of the first and second steps in their policy. So they just, they chose to start at the third step. So, um, the question just is, is what this board wants to do, uphold or amend or overturn, right? The motion on the table is the, to amend the permanent suspension to the original thirty days. That's what we're talking about right now.
Which was already served.
The reason I, and the reason I made that-
So she could go tomorrow.
Correct.
Correct. And the reason I made that motion was so we could talk about it, and also make a friendly amendment to a time that, a time period that we felt like could be either denied or-
Yeah, I feel that, same as me. Like, I think, I think you need time for it to settle a little bit, too. Like, just like you say, like, I think that we can come to a friendly moment.
So you don't think thirty days is the right time period?
I, I, I do think that, like, I wanna see that there, there's a chance for some amends. I just feel like to, to knock it off altogether.
So what's the right amount of time?
Well, that's the thing, right? It's hard for me to know in a, in a right of mind. I think-
So our advisory board had the ability to do exactly that, thirty, sixty, ninety?
But they said lifetime.
Three months, they said permanent. So we just, the question is, is there something in the middle that you think is better? I don't know more than they do about what's going on over there. I can tell you that for sure. I'm only there last month.
But then how do we justify it back to the, the advisory board that we're, you're taking away what they-
I would say the justification would be that there needs to be more documentation if you wanna permanently ban somebody.
But is that in our bylaws or anything, or it's not?
And it's not required as part of this policy?
It's not required, but, I mean, it's good procedure. We're talking about-
Sure, I mean, we signed off on this, right? So, I mean, we signed off on this policy on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. So Eric, you weren't here.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, we all agree on the process and the offense. It's more, now it comes down to the moral issue. Is, is a year too long? Yeah, I think it's too long. Is it lifetime long? Yes. Is thirty days enough? Maybe not. Okay, we can add, we can add to it. I'm, I'm fine with, you know, February first.
So, do you wanna vote on the thirty days, and then?
Or do you wanna make a friendly, someone make a friendly amendment to a different date?
I'll make a friendly amendment to a year. Or do we wanna do that?
Will you accept that amendment?
No, I will not accept that amendment.
No, six minutes, no, I don't like it.
All right, so, all those in favor of, oh, sorry, Dawn?
No, we can, we can, well, I was gonna say, we need to take the voter. If you wanna hear what I was gonna say, you can do that, too.
Well, is it, is it, are you gonna friendly amendment, something that Tyler would like?
It wa, it wasn't a friendly amendment. It was just kind of a, my, my concern with it being back to the exact date, and this is already a taunting situation, is we're essentially saying that the advisory board, you know, we're, we're overruling everything they did, and we're putting it back in the same situation it was when she went back into that building. And that's, that's a concern. I, I do not agree with a permanent ban. Um, I do think, I do think it can't just be ended as of today. So, uh, that, that's, that's my concern with that.
Okay, so let's vote on the motion on the table with the thirty days. So, um, the motion is for, to amend the permanent suspension to the original thirty days. All those in, oh, all those in favor?
Oh, I, yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, opposed? Kim, nay?
Don, nay.
I, nay. I, I wanna, I wanna do another.
All right, that's fine. We're gonna do, we're gonna keep going. All right, so that was a one, four, zero. All right, who else has got a motion? Who else has got something they wanted to consider?
I just don't wanna permanent ban. I don't know what timeline it could be.
What do you wanna do?
I would do the first one, just to uphold the suspension, but that's me.
Make a motion, see what happens. We've gone both extremes, right?
It's, it's, it's not gonna pass. Nobody wants, I, and I get it, that's fine.
I don't know. Make a motion, find out. I don't know what people wanna do.
Has anybody ever been held on the permanent suspension?
Someone needs to make a motion.
I already made one. I'll make another one.
I moved the Board of Selectmen to uphold the permanent suspension for Diane Mola.
Is there a second? I'll second it. All right, so, did you wanna add anything, or you feel like you've already kind of argued your point of supporting the board? Okay. All right, I think I've already heard Sheila doesn't like it. Tyler, we know doesn't like it. Dawn struggles with it, but all those in favor? Kim, aye.
Eric, aye. Tyler, no.
Don, nay.
Sheila, no.
All right, so we got two, three. We're getting closer.
Now somewhere between.
I make a motion to amend the ruling to one year.
Amend the permanent suspension of Diane Mola-
Yes.
To one year, starting?
No.
The date of the event, okay, uh, okay. Okay.
Date of suspension or date of appeal?
Okay, all right. Thoughts?
So it's date of suspension or date of appeal?
I would suggest that it typically be the, the date of the occurrence.
Yeah, so December sixteenth.
Yes, sir.
November sixteenth.
Sorry.
No.
November sixteenth, yeah. All right.
I'm gonna second.
Okay. Any discussion on one year? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Don, aye.
Oh, God.
Tyler, no.
No. Got anything, Eric? Did you vote?
No.
No, you didn't vote, or no, your vote is no?
No, I'm voting no.
Okay. Now we're two, three again. It's a tough one, guys. Gotta get there eventually. What's the magic number?
June first.
What's that?
July first. No, I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, not first, sixteen, six months.
So six months?
Six months.
All right, I make a motion for, um, Michelle, make one. I make a motion for, um, um-
To amend the permanent suspension of Diane Mola?
To amend the permanent suspension to, uh, six months from the date of November sixteenth. There you go. Here we go.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Tyler, aye.
Sheila, aye.
Dawn, Todd?
I'm probably gonna be a pain and say no.
All right, I'm a no, too.
I'm a no.
All right, so still two, three, three, two, three, zero. So we don't like permanent, we don't like thirty days, we don't like six months, we don't like a year. Is there, is there a solution to this problem, guys?
So, so my, my concern might be personally, I'm, I, I, I don't love permanent, but I, you know, I'm, I'm probably hard on a, a year plus. So, my, my concern is, I don't know where we're gonna go from under that, uh, from my vote. Um, that's just one fifth of the votes.
Wait, so, what was that? You wanted more than a year, but less than permanent?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is I lean more toward permanent than I do not permanent. I just don't support permanent, but-
So you wanna say like, ten years?
No. I'm, I'm just saying, I think, I think anything too short.
What's too short, Dawn?
I don't know. My, my biggest issue is this is about taunting, and if you, if we circumvent this process, we're basically giving into them, saying that what they did was okay, and that's, that's my, that's my issue with a lower number.
I don't think a six-month, a three-month ban is us saying it's okay. I think it's us deliberating on how long it should be.
With no documentation.
With, with no previous documentation.
Can I try a motion?
Yes, please.
And you can punch me if you want, but I move the Board of Selectmen amend the permanent suspension of Diane Mola to through January one, twenty twenty-five, which is over a year, which I think he was saying he would support.
Okay. All right, that was, Eric made the motion. Is there a second?
Uh, second, I'll second it.
All right. I don't think he likes it, Eric. Dawn, you're gonna have to make the motion, I think. All those in favor?
Eric, aye.
I, I guess we're waiting for my vote, Don, aye, I guess.
Ah, this is hard.
Me, Todd, let me know. I'm gonna know. I don't know. I know.
Tyler, no.
Sheila, no.
Kim, no.
We gotta come up with something.
I mean, they're within their, my, my issue comes all the way back to the beginning. They're, they're within their scope of authority. Whether or not I agree with the permanent ban, they are allowed to do that. We have appointed them to this thing. I, I just, I struggle with that.
There's a lot of things we're allowed to do. It's whether or not it's correct or more.
To be honest, if you're reading this-
We can do a lot of things.
I do believe that you need to have, in writing, I mean, there's a lot going in. I can say that you can say, you can have a permanent ban based on certain things, but if you read through their, all of this, it really should have documentation.
But it says, they reserve the right to dispense with the first and second offense procedures.
Do, do we even have anybody on staff who can do this?
What?
Like, on, on, like, on these Thursdays when it's busy, do we wanna hire a, a monitor to be looking at people and documenting?
Yes, please.
So a couple of things, I guess. I mean, it's just like any other, um, situation, at least in my mind, if you, if you find that somebody's being disrespectful, um, a couple of things. Uh, you know, I'll get a, an anonymous complaint all the time. There's nothing I'm gonna do with an anonymous complaint. Uh, if, if you aren't, the, the complaint isn't willing to write that down and say that Joe Smith said this, it didn't happen, um, because I can't back it up, right? Uh, if a, a person, if a staff member at the Council on Aging hears something that, that violates the code of conduct policy, it should be documented. Doesn't mean you gotta hire somebody else. Doesn't mean it has to happen that second. It just means when things settle down, whether it's later Thursday, or, or maybe Friday, or whatever, you document that Joe Smith said this, or acted in this manner. And that has to be provided to, or shared with, or counseled Joe Smith to say, "Mr. Smith, on Thursday at eleven o'clock in the, in the morning, um, I witnessed this situation, and based on that, I'm gonna suspend you. I'm going to put a, 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 a letter in your file. He has a copy of it." And he has the ability at that point to appeal to the Council on Aging, uh, Advisory Board. If there's a situation that occurs that's, um, significant enough to move from a, 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 a verbal warning to a written warning to a suspension to a termination, you know, you've gotta be able to justify that as an employer, um, in my case. And, and I guess in applying those rules to this situation, did the Council on Aging Advisory Board act in a manner that the board feels as though the, the, the violation was significant or severe enough to warrant, in the Board of Selectmen's opinion, a permanent ban, period. And if it's not, then you've gotta find something that is palatable to this, to the five members of the Board of Selectmen. If it is, um, then, and you've already voted against it, so it's obviously not, right?
So-
Sorry.
No, you're good.
I was just gonna say, Kim, i- is, is it possible to make motions, so it's not in the code of conduct? Is it possible to make motions to be reassessed, you know, July one?
What?
As in reassess the ban?
Oh, the permanent ban?
So my, my concern, so my concern at this point, frankly, is there's nothing in the document that allows for reconsideration at some point in the future. I would suggest after this, uh, event,
Mm-hmm.
um, that everybody take a step back and, and maybe let the, the friends of the council, I'm sorry, let the friends, the Council on Aging Advisory Board know what your concerns are, so they can potentially make some modifications to the, to the, to the, to the rules. So, maybe there's an opportunity to reconsider this in, you know, a year, or whatever it happens to be.
Reconsider the rules and regulations you're talking about.
No, I, I guess what I'm saying is, is reconsider whether or not the person should be allowed back in. If that, because it's not in the rules now, I don't think you can do it. But should something like that be considered to be added to the rules?
Yeah, you're saying to reconsider adding something about an appeal, like, or an application for consideration.
Right now, I think the Board of Selectmen has to decide whether or not the, the suspension is, um, either lifted completely or, or reduced to a certain date.
All right, I'm gonna roll the dice on this one and say I would like to reconsider, I would move to reconsider the motion that failed to amend the permanent suspension through one, one. You're, we're not voting, one, one, twenty twenty-five. We're not voting on that. We're voting on the reconsideration. So I'd like to move to reconsider the one, one, twenty twenty-five.
Are you moving it? Do you need a second? I'll second.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor? Kim, aye?
Eric, aye. Tyler, aye.
Sheila, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, so we're reconsidering that motion. I think it's a compromise.
So I think, and if we do that, if we, if, if, if we ask them to add something in here for someone to, to, um, who's been banned to be reconsidered earlier, when would that, this, this doesn't need to go to town meeting, probably.
No, so we would, we would discuss it, we would have them consider some changes first. They would vote on it, provide their recommendation to us for an amendment to this.
Right.
Then we would vote on it in a future meeting.
Got it.
And then it would be from whatever effective date. This one was twenty twenty-two.
So we would need to vote on that.
Correct.
Yeah, I got it. I would love to see that.
I agree, because I think that would make it a lot easier.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so, move the Board of Selectmen amend the permanent suspension of Diane Mola to, uh, through, uh, to return, I guess, or through one, one, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Kim, aye?
Eric, aye.
Don, aye.
Tyler, no.
I'm still gonna say no.
Okay, but we have a three, two now.
There we go, a three, two.
So I will send a letter to Ms. Mola, um, and that'll be the last, probably the last person that tells her. But, uh, I'll send a letter to Ms. Mola tomorrow informing her that the Board of Selectmen has voted to allow her entrance uh, back into the Council on Aging on January second, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay. All right. I think we've expressed the importance of documentation, too, if things come up. Just generally, I think it's good practice. We just document, document, document.
I would just ask the board if to send any suggested changes to the, um-
To, to Mary Beth and to Kate?
Yes.
Kate, so suggested, suggested language change?
Sure.
Thank you, Kate.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you need to adjourn your meeting?
Yes.
Sorry, you have to do it by roll call, call vote again. So, someone needs to make a motion from the COA Advisory Board to adjourn their meeting. Someone wanna do that? Donna wants to do it. Is there a second for you?
I could.
Okay. Joan and Maureen, are you saying aye to adjourning your meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming out.
All right, that is seven oh eight for the minutes.
Safe drive home, okay?
Okay, all right, so they adjourned at seven oh eight, perfect. Okay.
Temperature's dropping. Careful on the roads.
So, yes, be careful out there, so-
Be very careful.
Thirty-eight to thirty-one in like an hour and a half.
So our next agenda item is consideration of an amendment of the Public Health Collaboration Intermunicipal Agreement for the Public Health Excellence for Sharing Services Grant. That is some title.
It is.
Wow.
Only the state of Massachusetts can come up with that.
Massachusetts.
So this, this request is being made by, um, the public health nurse. In the original agreement that was, that, of which Kingston was the, uh, lead community, since that time, uh, the, the lead community has moved from Kingston to Plymouth. Um, the language in the grant, um, states that the grant will continue even after the grant funding is exhausted, meaning the communities that are part of this grant would have to fund the programs through taxation. Uh, what we're asking the board to consider this evening is to remove or amend the agreement to remove the language, uh, that states that the grant would continue after grant funding is exhausted.
Okay, sounds good to me. Any questions?
Can I say that the Board of Health is okay with all this?
I'm sorry?
The Board of Health?
Yes.
Good with this, okay.
Uh, I move the board, uh, I move the board approve the amended Public Health Collaboration Intermunicipal Agreement for the Public Health Excellence for Shared Service Grant.
Second.
All those in favor? Kim, aye?
Sheila, aye.
Tyler, aye.
Eric, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, so it's five, zero, zero. All right, moving on to, we received an application for a new common victular license from a restaurant, a new restaurant located in the Kingston Collection Food Court. We have received all the necessary paperwork and the relevant- We have received all the necessary paperwork, and the relevant department heads have reviewed them and support this application. So, unless there are any questions?
I'm so excited for having more food.
Entertained emotion.
Um, I, I move the board approve, oh, I move the Board of Selectmen approve the common victular license for, oh, goodness. I'm gonna try really hard. Guislemes, Brazil, contingent on final approval of the Board of Health.
Second.
I really hope I did it, I did it justice.
All those in favor? Kim, aye?
Sheila, aye.
Tyler, aye.
Eric, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, that's five, zero, zero. And next, for our first initial item, we have Perry Lima Cafe, also in the Kingston Collection, was approved at the end of twenty twenty-three, but their license was received a little bit later to be included in that meeting, so this is just an annual...
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the annual license for Perry Lima Cafe.
Second.
Second.
Wow, you all said it. I'm gonna give it to who got it?
Dawn, give it to Dawn.
Give it to Dawn? All right, Dawn, second.
Port, aye.
All those in favor? Kim, aye?
Sheila, aye.
Tyler, aye.
Eric, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, so five, zero, zero. And our next agenda item is a police chief search update.
Yeah, so we have narrowed the playing field down to two candidates. They will be going to the Assessment Center in the coming weeks to do their assessment. And so, at that point, we will move forward with one or two, there's, there's two left, and, and bring that, that'll be then brought to the board. So, we're, we're trucking along, and the train's mov, the train's moving, so, trucking along. And, yeah, so...
Are we on schedule?
Yeah, two weeks.
We're on schedule, I mean, within reason of, of how this process typically works.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Within the expected timeline?
Yeah.
Okay.
According to Russ, and, and how long, how long this usually takes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, perfect. Okay. Anything else on that? No? Any questions on the police chief search?
Good job, guys. Very good, very good job.
Excellent. So, we have, I guess we have minutes, and then we'll give it to you, 'cause that's what the agenda says. All right, so, we have two sets of minutes, and while I was not present at those minutes, those meetings, the minutes looked like they were accurate to the recording. And I, I mean, I know I can vote on them, but I, you don't need me to, and I wasn't there, so I know the tradition. People don't usually vote on them if they're not there, so. I know you understand.
I'll make a motion, I move the Board of Selectmen to accept the open session meeting minutes of December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and January second, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Nice.
All those in favor?
Sheila, aye.
Tyler, aye.
Eric, aye.
Don, aye.
And I'll abstain.
Not a lot, not a lot to update everybody on. Interesting timing, as part of the governor's nine-seat budget adjustments, the funding for Kingston's coastal stormwater mitigation has been reduced from twenty-five thousand to twelve thousand five hundred dollars. She had to make, or she did make several million dollars worth of cuts, because revenues were overestimated, I guess, or not coming in at, at, at levels that they expected, put it that way. The Capitol Planning Committee will be, begin reviewing their capital, the capital approval plan that was presented to them Thursday night, and they'll meet every couple of weeks to work their way through that. And the Finance Committee met last week, and then will be meeting with smaller departments to review proposed budgets on twenty-fourth of January, and they've sent out a schedule of the, that, or they'll be sending out a schedule to, to meet with departments throughout the budget process, hoping to find a consensus budget that both the board and the FinCon can support moving forward at town meeting. That's all I have this evening. Happy to try and...
Are we gonna have joint meetings coming up, too? I just wanna make sure that I'm, if I'm needed for anything?
Not necessarily.
I mean, I usually listen, but I didn't wanna make sure that, like, you know, no meeting law violation or anything like that.
Typically, what's happened is, at least since I've been here, is the FinCon has tried, has come up with a number that they feel comfortable with, and will bring that number back to the Board of Selectmen and say, this is the, the bottom line, and here's how they got there. Does the board support that? Or do they not? If they do, and they have, and at least in my, my time here, there's a consensus there. If there's a need, potentially, because maybe both, most, both boards don't support what's happening, then, then there may be a need for a joint meeting.
Okay. All right. Any questions? No? All right. Selectmen comments, the only thing I had is, when I was at the senior center last, I was told Eric and Dawn are going to teach them about technology. So, I was told you're not to forget that you're supposed to do that. So, just make sure you follow up with them, whoever that is. Yeah, technology classes. You want that, too?
That was in the bylaw, I think, by the way, too.
Yeah.
I think Keith's gonna be there for that.
Yeah.
I, I am. But I did, I would like to say, just for, let the board know that the, the Annual Massachusetts Municipal Association Conference is Friday and Saturday. I'll be attending those days. So, I probably won't be here on Friday unless something happens that causes me not to be able to go.
Okay.
All right?
Great.
I wanted to go really badly, but I'm not gonna go.
Oh, and everybody who has to write an annual report, that's due this week, so... By what, Friday at eleven-thirty or whatever time the deadline is? I think it's this week, so.
I do, I, I do want you guys to know that I, I do go to a lot of the MMA, you know, like, those trainings, like, those noontime trainings, I tend to go to a lot of them, so I tend to just forward them along, but there are some really good ones coming up that I tend to go to. So, if anybody, you know, I tend to send the recordings off to you guys. If it gets in doing, let me know.
No, no, I like it.
I like to have the recordings.
Appreciate it.
If I can't come every time, but there's great recordings coming up. I do it on my lunchtime and, and my fun time of lunch.
Nice.
But, but thank you. I just want to thank you for this morning. I think we didn't have to have a delay, which was wonderful. Everybody around us...
Schools.
Everybody around us had, had delays, and we, it was midterm study at the high school, so thank you very much that, for that. So, just thank you so much for, for getting them to school today, and I appreciate everybody in, in the town, so, that's it.
And I think the plow trucks are doing their best to keep up with the snow. And if you know anybody who drives a plow and wants to sign up to help us plow the roads, let us know. We are still looking for, I think we're still looking for, what, twenty drivers?
Just about.
Yeah, so, come on down.
Maybe I should get my CDL.
Keep them trucking.
All right, anything, Tyler, Eric, Dawn?
Nothing.
Nope.
All right.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Kim, aye?
Sheila, aye.
Tyler, aye.
Eric, aye.
Don, aye.
All right, so we adjourned at seven seventeen, and our next meeting is the thirtieth.